Yes, it is.
Nobody does that.
I'll open the April 18th Wednesday work session. We're going to first discuss the rental housing code. Mayor Piercey is still in Washington DC with the United Front. And then later we'll talk about update on the transportation system plan. I'll turn it over to the Assistant Manager.
Thanks, Councilor Brown. The City Manager, John Reese, is actually planning on being here at this meeting, but let me know he's going to be a little bit late. And since I was already going to be at the table, I said, "No problem." But he may join us as the meeting goes on. So this morning, we're going to talk about the rental housing code and some of the work we've done and next steps. And I'm just going to turn it over to Stuart Ramsing. He has a presentation, and I'll be here to help answer questions as they come up.
Thank you. So, good afternoon. I am Stuart Ramsing. I'm with the Planning and Development Department and here to provide an overview on the work that's occurred since the decision last fall to extend the rental housing code to September of 2012. As you may recall, the last time the rental housing code was before you, we asked for nine additional months to address some questions and investigate some options further. So we've reached out a lot, we've listened a lot, and we've collected a long list of recommendations, and I'll share those with you today. At the end of my presentation, we'll be asking you to provide direction to schedule a public hearing and take comment on extending the code four more years to 2016. But before we get to that, let me bring you up to date on the work and the recommendations provided to us, much of it from a committee of the Housing Policy Board. So why the Housing Policy Board? That board is an inter-jurisdictionally appointed body, and they've taken an interest in the code because their mission intersects with the habitability standards. The standards that underpin the rental housing code here, the Board's, the Housing Policy Board's mission is to increase the decent affordable housing, availability of decent affordable housing for the low and very low-income families and individuals in Lane County. And the purpose of the rental housing code, then, is to provide minimum habitability criteria to safeguard health, property, and public well-being as it relates to rental housing. So their real work started when the Board created a committee and came together and spent five different meetings delving into a number of topics. And because they finished their work only several weeks ago, they were able to incorporate into their recommendations much of what's been learned and suggested by others along the way here. But let me pause, then, on the work from the Housing Policy Board Committee and tell you about two other actions that fed into the committee's work and the Board's recommendations. First, we made a trip to Corvallis, which administers a code on which Eugene's is based. The Corvallis program has a higher fee, yet they have a different level of acceptance by the owners, and we wanted to better understand the differences. So joining on that trip to Corvallis was Norton Cabell. Norton's a member of the Rental Owners Association and Chair of the Housing Policy Board, John Van Lanningham, also on the Housing Policy Board, and two members of the Rental Owners Association, Eric Hall and Jim Straub. Jim is also currently President of the Rental Owners Association Board of Directors. Now, I wasn't planning to go into the details on the Corvallis program today, except to say that we confirmed that the program's administered very similar to the City of Eugene's program. In your packet, though, I've got a lot more information. If you're interested, it compares the similarities and the differences between Eugene and the Corvallis program. Another bit of work, then, that fed into the Housing Policy Board Committees came from the rental owners themselves. They met several times to brainstorm issues and ideas for the code. Eric Hall led the effort, and we spent a long evening with Eric and his committee going through their recommendations for the program. But now, let me come back and bring it back to the Housing Policy Board's Committee, where the different interests and experiences, including the Corvallis trip, the rental owners brainstorming group, it all came together. Now, the committee consisted of Norton Cabell, again, who not only chairs the Housing Policy Board, but he chaired the Committee of the Board. Also on the Committee and with the Housing Policy Board were Virginia Thompson, Jennifer Ribbly, John Van Lanningham. John, as I just mentioned, also joined our team to Corvallis, and John's been invaluable with his experience and perspectives on the issues. And regrettably, I left his name out of the list for this committee work. He absolutely was on the Committee and an important part of that. Representing owners and their interests were Deborah Imsey, Executive Director of Metro Multifamily Housing Association, Dennis Cassidy and Eric Hall, both rental owners and Board members of the Lane County Rental Owners Association. And then both Dennis and Eric were part of that owners brainstorming session. So as part of that, they were able to bring those recommendations to the Committee for their consideration, and Eric joined on that trip to Corvallis. So I'm going to run through the recommendations the Committee made to staff. They're primarily administrative changes that staff are either working on already or exploring further. The one change we'll look to you for direction on, and it aligns with the City Manager's recommendation to you as well, is to extend the code's four years to 2016. And with that, I'll go through the recommendations for those five meetings. In your packet is a memo from Chair Norton Cabell to the Housing Policy Board with the recommendations and the form they were presented. I'm summarizing them here, so the format's just a little bit different the way I'll present right here. And they start with, "Reduce the annual fee." So we're exploring methods of reducing the program costs, as well as drawing down the reserve fund. That'll be passed along, the savings will be passed along, then, in a fee reduction of some type for this upcoming September's billing. Online accounts and billing. Last year was the first year that the owners could pay online. There are some additional savings from even more online services that we are continuing to pursue. Public access to the work. This is already underway. When we were at Corvallis, we saw that they had their information. Much of it is available through their website. We already have an initial version online available through the website right now, and it's still work in progress, but we're moving on this one. Resources and FAQs. This complements the daily work fielding calls and responding to emails. We have a start on this already, and over the next weeks, we'll make more of the responses to the most frequently asked questions available through the city's webpages. There are also some models we're evaluating to explain on the website, the roles and responsibilities of both the owners and the tenants. And finally, we're looking at providing a letter template that could be used by a renter that effectively, to effectively inform an owner when they've got a habitability concern. Outreach. The Housing Policy Board recommends increased outreach, and last fall's survey that we performed confirms that there's a segment of the renting population unfamiliar with the program and who are therefore unlikely to make use of it. We'll explore other ways to increase that outreach and education to both the rental owners and to the hard-to-reach renters. Billing. Billing is a cost to the program, and we'll need to explore other ways to do that, within the city, as well as outsourcing the billing. And multi-year billing. Because those billings do have a cost with them, we're exploring the savings that may result from billing less often. It was also a reason for putting the sunset out four years, in the proposal, in any case, four years, to allow time to implement multi-year billing if it's determined to reduce costs. It will be our intention to adjust the ordinance, then, to allow billing flexibility, as the code currently requires an annual billing. Program and review advice. This is a topic brought forward in the Housing Policy Board recommendation, and we'll be establishing a process to receive ongoing program review and input in a manner that provides flexibility to accommodate the shifts the program's facing. We're currently working on a department reorganization strategies right now, one of which includes integrating the rental housing code program into the Community Development Division. There, it would be part of a different work team focused on housing stock preservation, housing affordability, and fair housing issues. Late fee. Corvallis, they have a $100 late fee that's charged several months after a payment is due. In Eugene, we have a $20 late fee. It's regardless of the number of units. In Corvallis, it's $100 per unit. In Eugene, it's just $20 per account. So we'll be exploring further whether we should making, make an adjustment there. Because in Eugene, right now, whether one has one unit, 10 units, or 100 units, it's a $10, it's a $20 late fee. It's a monthly late fee, but it's on the account, not the number of units.
Is it per piece of property?
The, per dwelling unit. So a property could have a duplex, that would be two dwelling units.
But if an owner has more than one property, though, like on the east side and the west side of town?
It would be the way they set up their account. And, and there's some details of that. Some individuals want, have every property under a separate LLC, and so they have individual accounts. So it's really set up as it suits the owner. The point here is, you could have 20 units or 200 units in one account, and there's a $20 late fee. So we'll just be looking if there's a way to compel them to make the payment timely. And here, there may be some portions of the code that can be more effectively administered by community organizations. So we recently received a proposal from several rental owners on this exact point, and we'll be looking into that further. So what I've just ran through are some recommendations made to staff, and we're working or exploring on, exploring these further. The last recommendation, we'll however need your direction to initiate a change to the ordinance, and the recommendation is to continue the housing code for four more years to fall 2016. Now, I'm presenting this last as it's a change that requires your action, but, action by the council here to change the ordinance, but the recommendation was made by the Housing Policy Board Committee. It was their first recommendation, and they recommended that the code be continued, but modified. And the points that I've just run through are part of the modifications that they're referring to when they, when they want to see this code advanced with changes. So in conclusion, we have a lot of work already underway, a few topics to explore more fully. We had a committee with owner representation that recommends a continuation of the program for four more years, along with a number of changes I've covered that we're actively pursuing. Prior to the bills going out this September, we'll provide you an update on the program, the reduced fee, we'll have the precise amount of that reduced fee at that time, and implementation of the recommendations that I've just shared with you here. So I'll end then with the last, and this is the single recommendation from the City Manager, and it's what's in the AIS. It's the second option that they, to, the City Manager's recommendation to direct staff, to you, the council, to direct staff to develop an ordinance that will extend the code four years to fall 2016, at which time it will automatically expire, that's a sunset, and to schedule a public hearing and action for the council on the proposed ordinance. So, thank you. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Just one quick question regarding the bills that go out in September. Where do those bills get mailed to? Are they mailed to the rental unit, or?
The bills are mailed to the account holder.
They are mailed to the?
And, yes, to the account holder. And that could be to an owner, it could be to a management company. It's, as the owner sets that up as the responsible party for that account.
I'd heard that somebody had mentioned that they get mailed to the, to the actual, the rental unit? Is that, that's not the case?
No, that wouldn't be the case, no.
Okay, Alan's next.
I'm good with the, I'm good with the four-year extension. I think that's appropriate. On page 14 of the report, I noticed that we have the lowest rate unit fee in the state of all the ones that, are these all the project programs that are in the state?
They may not be all of them, the representative.
They're the major ones, I suspect.
Yeah.
So we have the lowest one in the state, and yet we're, are we just more efficient in, at what we do, and that it doesn't take us $10 to do what we need to do, which is why we built the surplus, and everybody else is, some are $40, $50?
Yeah, the programs can be quite varying and quite different, so there's some risk with comparing the programs in that way. The closest program is the Corvallis one. The program, the scope of the program is very similar, and the administration is very similar. Their program right now is $11 per door, and they're increasing that to $15 per door every year until they reach the $15.
Dollar a year until they get to $15.
Until they get to $15. The other programs, though, have differences, and they're, they're meaningful differences. Some of them have inspections involved, some don't. It's really apples and oranges across the state as we do the comparison.
I'm okay with adjusting the late fee. Is that, is that a problem that we have seen, that people are late with their, turning in their fees?
Yes, there are a number that are late. We may be able to give you, provide some better numbers right now, but the late fees alone generate between around $10,000 to $15,000. That was revenue we had anticipated. So at $20 a late fee, you can.
That's quite a few.
Yeah. Now, we do it monthly, so it's not tend to, we have to be careful on the math. They may get three late fees if they put the payment off for three separate periods. But yes, it's a, it's a number. And then we pass them on to collections at the close of the fiscal year. And so we stop charging the late fee at that point and move on to the next.
Can you give us the numbers, how many go to collections?
Yeah.
And I suspect, you know, the purpose of a late fee is to incentivize people not to be late.
Okay. Yeah, we'll follow up with you on the numbers.
So the purpose of a late fee is to incentivize people not to be late?
Absolutely.
Ours doesn't seem to be working, so I'm looking at that and changing it seems to be inappropriate action.
Yes.
And I'm not that interested in the provisions that privatize the billing of it. I'm willing to look at it, but I don't know that that's necessarily where I want to go with this program or any of our city programs necessarily. And then I'm interested in two things that, the differences in the Corvallis ones, I found that really interesting, that they had a couple of different things on their, two in particular that really caught my attention. One was on page three of the report, or page 50, whatever packet, the habitability standards. They recently added appliances, air infiltration, air leaks and stuff, and drywall condition. And I'm interested in looking at those, why they added those, and what, how it would work to have those added to our program. Those seem appropriate. If your stove or refrigerator doesn't work, that's a pretty big deal. And I suspect that's major appliances, not minor appliances. And then the second thing that they do differently than us is the, is the notice and action periods are not, there's an exception for that when it's heat, or hot water, or non-functioning smoke detectors, where the action needs to be taken within 48 hours, as opposed to ours, which is about, can be 10 to 20 days.
Yes.
And if you don't have heat in the middle of January, 10 to 20 days is rather significant. And I'd like to look at us modifying ours for that exception, so that we get to that, take care of those issues earlier.
Chris is next.
Thank you. I really want to thank all the folks that have served, a great report, and all the people that have served, both Housing Policy Board members, other folks that have come into the Committee, and also the rental folks. I think it's, it's really been a good process. The interesting thing for me coming out of this is, and I think the Corvallis experience is what really creates a lot of the, both the questions and maybe a guidance towards what is the real issue, is how can you have two basic sets of codes that are very similar in terms of how they're implemented, and have one be accepted very well, and the other one have a great deal of concern about it? And for me, the specifics and the details, and I'm going to speak in kind of generalized terms, are really what, is less of what drives this than it is the other issue, which we've touched on in other contexts, is do you have trust and confidence in the organization that's administering that code? In other words, you can have whatever code you want to. If I am nervous, or fearful, or don't trust the organization that's implementing it, then I'm going to be worried that it's going to be abused or used in an incorrect way. Just a simple example of that is the size of the surplus, and the concern that you're building up this huge amount of money that you're going to then use for other things. And so you're soaking me for money in order to use it for other stuff. Or the fear that if we create a housing policy, or we create a rental policy, it's going to be used to sneak a whole bunch of other stuff in. And so it's a trust, and it's a confidence question. And so for me, I think the most important thing is to be able to say, "We want to have a rental policy that's thoughtful, that's smart, that does the right kinds of things, and that it's implemented in a way that's fair, equitable, and something that you can trust." And I think that really addresses what at least I was hearing, is a lot of the undercurrent concerns, that this can be a great tool used for bad purposes. And I think the city needs to be able to reassure people that it's, that at least the city now is not an organization that wants to abuse or use its rental policy in an ineffective way. And so I think some of the recommendations here, particularly around ways to look at how a policy-level review and input, how things can be done in a more effective way, are ways we can demonstrate we have heard what the rental owners are saying. We have recognized what's good about this program, what works well with it. I'm not necessarily in favor of getting rid of it, because I think there's many things here that are good, but I do think we need to really look at how we could make sure that we restore, or at least build, trust and confidence that this is going to be used in a way that fulfills its true purpose, and not the fear that people have that it might be used for some other purpose that may or may not be there.
Betty?
Thanks. First, I have a question. Were any renters involved in your committee? I didn't, I saw rental owners, but.
There are, they, on the Rental Housing Policy Board, those members, I don't know if they're renters, but they represent the interests of the owners, I'm sorry, the renters. We had Virginia Thompson, Jennifer Ribbly, and John Van Lanningham, who are not, not renters, but representing the interest. I don't know if they rent.
We did reach out to a significant number of renters with the survey in the previous
I agree with Alan about some things that we should add that Corvallis has, but I'm also interested in energy efficiency, which was recommended by the Sustainability Commission, and I didn't see anything in our packet about that. What about, when you talk about multi-year bills, what about owners who are temporary? I know people who weren't able to sell their houses immediately, and, and so they're not really in the business of renting property, but they are renting for a year, or two, or three. So if you had a multi-year bill, what would?
Well, that is what we need to explore further. You're touching on one of the issues there can be, there is some savings potentially to the multi-year billing, so is there a way to offer that up to those that take the choice? There are a number of variables we'll be exploring.
Give people a choice, that might be good. I think when you say that a lot of people are, don't know about it, when more renters know about it, if we find a way to let them know, you may need more of that money to enforce the, to implement the ordinance. I was, I think the late fee should be increased. I think that's ridiculously small. And I don't understand why people are complaining about $10 a year. I know a few people who are owners who rent, and they say, "It's nothing, $10 per unit." It's not as if rents were $100 a month, and it was one-tenth of it, or, well, this is a yearly fee, even. That's, I don't know why they think it's so bad, and I don't know what, what terrible use we could put that money to. There might be reasons for transferring it, but I don't think it's, I don't think the ordinance is set up that way. And I do not think the ordinance should sunset at all. I didn't think it should sunset when we started it. I didn't think it should sunset when we continued it. That puts the burden on the people, on the renters, who generally, not always, but generally are not affluent, and are not people who make their living by watching this. They, the people who got us to start this were mainly students. They worked really hard and put a lot into it over a period of, I think, more than a year, maybe a couple of years. And you can't expect the people who are renters, who are just trying to get by, to spend all that time watching that we don't sunset the ordinance. And I think it's really important to remove the sunset. It's always possible to repeal an ordinance if there's a reason, but I don't see why we have to let, have people watching all the time to see that they aren't, that we don't get rid of them. I've noticed, as Alan mentioned, that ours is by far the lowest fee, and I certainly don't think we should reduce it. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, you're next.
Thank you. You know, listening to what Alan said about certain provisions that, that have been suggested about appliances and, and air incursion, weather stripping, et cetera. A quick question before I delve into that. This code took effect in 2004, is that correct?
It became effective 2005, I believe. The development was occurring in 2004.
Kind of funny, I was sitting at a table in this room back in about 1995, when Kevin Hornbuckle first brought up the concept of a housing code. Mike, I think maybe you were in the room at that time. He dropped it on us, like he, he made a motion to adopt a housing code without any, without any research at all, and it almost passed. So that, the history goes back before 2004. Looking at the, what is the City of Eugene Rental Housing Program? And it's, the purpose is to provide minimum habitability criteria. That's specifically what the code is for. And if, if appliances are determined to have, to provide minimum habitability criteria, then certainly we need to look at appliances, and look at it judiciously to make sure that it does, you know, address the intent of the code, which is simply minimum habitability criteria. Before the code, there were, there were a new, a number of things that were happening in rentals in various parts of the city. And I think the code's been a very good thing to, that renters, rental owners have embraced as well as renters, because it gives them, you know, it allows them to understand what, or to be able to perform to a standard that they know they're providing adequate rental to their, to their tenants. So I think, you know, the, the question that has arisen around the $10 a month, and specifically surrounding the surplus amount of money that's generated, and I think that Councilor Pryor hit the nail right on the head, is if the people who are paying the $10 can trust that we are going to use the 10, whatever surplus is, is generated for the intent of the code, then I think it's, it's a foregone conclusion that nobody is going to have any complaints about that. And, you know, we're by far lower than everybody else, or $1, I guess, couldn't seem like by far to me. But the, the question regarding, just for nomenclature, regarding the door, you say it's $11 per door in Corvallis, and that's.
Or, or unit, we're using those interchangeably.
Or front door to the unit.
Yes, yes, yes. Front door.
And once, back again to my earlier question regarding how people have billed for it, I had heard that from one owner, that he had incurred late fees because the bill had been sent to the rental unit, and the renter had simply tossed the bill away. We're, you're fairly sure that that's not a common occurrence?
It should, no, it's not a common occurrence. We send out thousands of bills, and so, can't speak to the one, but we, we actually request through the process, the contact information, and that's why it's varied, varied between owners, management companies, as I said.
Well, well done. We've certainly come a long way since, since it was suggested in 1995, so thank you very much.
Okay. I, I put myself in the queue. First, I've got some questions, and then, you know, a few comments. There's about more or less 30,000 units, billable units, total. Do we have a total of landlords? How many landlords are roughly?
I believe we're five to 6,000, I believe, for different accounts.
Five, 6,000, okay. All right. And a second question on page 13, quote, "Expenses have risen since 2005 and will exceed revenue in FY13 if there were no changes in the program." What is, "Expenses have risen"? Just kind of a thumbnail sketch.
Well, the, the expenses go up with inflationary increases every year. So what we're speaking to there, if we made no changes, the revenue and the expenses are matching now. They had not previously, so a surplus had accumulated. We are, however, talking about changes here.
Sure.
That's why we don't know.
All right. Thank you. Well, I ask that because my, my second question there, I mean, this is rhetorical for all of us to listen to and think about, is why would we think about reducing the fee? Because we're going to, apparently, in next year, we're going to be reaching a stage where the, the reserves will be drawn down by the increasing expenses, and then eventually, within a few years, there'll, there'll be a deficit. And at that time, of course, we can talk about, you know, increasing the fee, or, and, you know, we'll have a few years to see how it rationalizes out. I mean, like, are we really using these expenses for, I mean, you know, I look at it, and I go, $20, $90,000? That's not really, in today's world, to me, that's, I hate to say, it's. That's not really, in today's world, to me, that's, I hate to say, it's kind of trivial amount, really. Because the, you know, $10 a month per unit, that's 88 cents a month. Not only that, a unit can have four bedrooms. So there's four rents being collected from that one unit. 88 cents a month for that unit is 22 cents a bed. So I mean, you know, the amount to the landlord, to me, is, is really trivial, and yet it supports this very important program. And we've heard a lot about the landlord's concerns, and they're very important, you know, they're the ones that ultimately make all this happen. So their concerns are certainly very important. But when you read through, you know, the material, the respondents from the tenants, you get a different picture. It shifts. And you see that there are valid concerns, and there are a lot of people that are afraid to file a complaint for one reason or another. Sometimes it's a misperception, sometimes their fears are valid because they know the landlord and we don't. And so, I mean, you know, I hate to see that, their voice get lost in all of this and just, you know, like, overcollecting, are we overcollecting $10 too much? I don't think it's too much, and, where am I at?
Eighteen.
Okay, well, I'll need another round two. Next is Andrea.
Thank you. So I just, thank you for the work. Appreciate, appreciate it coming forward. I'm okay with the sunset, simply because it makes us do our work, have to come back to council and say, you know, yes or no again. So I don't have a problem with that, because I think that's when adjustments can be made. As far as Eugene and Corvallis, you know, the only thing I would really, I would really support going forward would be more about the health and safety of the clients. I mean, not having a working toilet is potential health hazard. Absence of heat is. Cold or hot water, you know, smoke detectors, I think, is really, is up there, too. So that would, you know, I could see adding those, you know, and having a little bit more bite to that, because it can take a long time. The only issue or concern I would have about appliances is the cost to the renter eventually, I mean, because not every rental unit has appliances. And I wouldn't want to discourage the rent, the rental owners, for the ones that provide it, to continue, not to continue to provide it. I don't know if I'm being very clear on that, but I just, I just have concerns about if we start down that road, it would be easier probably for the rental owners to say, "Okay, then, I just won't provide appliances," you know, simple as that. So I'd be kind of concerned about that. And I'm okay with leaving the, I was originally thinking that to reduce the fee, but with the explanation that it's going to be used, you know, next year, it'll, it'll be at that point. And we didn't charge them last year, is that correct? You didn't mail out bills?
No, we did mail out bills, and that was a point of contention, because we mailed them out before we had extended the sunset.
Okay.
So, you know, I just want to speak to the, to the number and what we're anticipating. So we had set the fee at $10, and we have been overcollecting over the last number of years. And so we have a surplus. It's not significant in the grand scheme of the city's budget, but it does represent money that the landlords have paid that we're not spending on the program. If nothing changes, as Stuart said, and we continue to run the program exactly as we're running it today, the fee is pretty close. In fact, we'll probably be looking at, in the next year or two years, needing to bump it up to match that. One of the things that we're exploring is, one, how do we work to reduce the cost of the program and keep the fee at $10? In the meantime, we have, we have a buildup, and so one of the things we're exploring is, do we do a one-year rebate, or a two-year rebate, or something so, in the next billing cycle, people see some amount of their dollars returned to them? Not because it's significant or egregious, but because it's the whole issue of building trust. And so my best outcome is that we have a situation where the rental owners are coming to the public forum and saying, "We support the program, we're working with staff positively, and we're continuing to build and grow." That's the best outcome for me. So whether we can lower it one year and then raise it, or do a rebate, or agree that $10 is right, and some, what we do with the reserve is a question that I think we just need to continue working on. But I'm committed to working on it and not just saying it's $10 in status quo. That's, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and George Bowing?
Well, Sarah, I'd like to maybe at another work session, continue that discussion on the, continue on at $10 and look at feasibility of rebates or whatever. I think that's an interesting approach, but either that or else lowering, and we'll have that discussion. And then it says that there were approximately 120 accounts flagged for collection this past fiscal year. How many accounts total are there? What's the percentage of that?
I believe that's where we, that's the 5,000 to 6,000 different accounts.
Okay, so that's not really that, that big of a percentage.
The ones that are collectioned are the ones that have gone all the way through the late fee, the monthly late fees, and have reached the end of the fiscal year or a billing cycle, and those are the ones that go to collection. So that's not, it's not 120 late payments.
Okay.
Those are the ones that even after accruing late fees, still have not paid.
Okay. And we don't know what the total number of late fees have been, have been assessed this past fiscal year?
No, we do.
Yeah.
I think that was in the report.
Yeah, I think it is in the report.
Guess I just didn't see it.
Yeah. I think it was around $10,000.
For the last year, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think maybe a little further discussion and a little more information on that before I'm willing to go forward with increasing the late fee. And the thing that really upsets me about this whole discussion is the, the addeds or the creeps that we're adding into, the things that are starting to creep into the discussion about adding into the code. Because when we first formed this code, it was very narrow and specific. And I, along with some other counselors, said that as long as we keep it with these items only, we're okay with it. But, you know, down the line, when things start getting added on, and that's what my fear was, is that eventually we're going to start adding X, Y, and Z. So I am opposed to adding anything else at this time into this, into this rental housing code. I think we should keep it the way it was originally formed, address the issues that were originally aimed at, because I think that's what it's, it's working on. And I think we should avoid adding anything into it, because by doing that, I'm, we're going to lose any credibility, I think, with the rental owners, and they're the ones that are going to be, ended up paying the fee on this. So I think we need to be really careful about adding in anything, and I'll oppose it.
Okay, Alan, you're next, second round.
So one of the changes that I would like to see happen isn't adding, but is changing the way that we deal with things that I think are minimum habitability, things like what Corvallis says, which is heat, hot water, functioning toilets, these things, and smoke detectors, those things are kind of minimum to me, if they have them. And I think the appliance ones, I probably, I don't know what Corvallis does, they probably limit it to the major appliances, like maybe refrigerators and stoves.
Not the hot tub and the spa?
Not the hot tub and the spa, right. So, you know, I'm sure we could limit it to those, because those are the kind of basic things. If you can't cook your food and you can't keep it safe in the refrigerator, to me, those are really critical minimum habitability issues, and that 48-hour turnaround and getting them fixed is something that I would like to explore more. And when we looked at the survey results, 64% of people said they agreed or strongly agreed that 20 days is way too long. So I think there's support for doing that as well. If we looked at air infiltration, Betty, that, that's the biggest probably energy efficiency thing. That's cracks in windows and doors and things like that, that would be, and drywall, too, are kind of, are around the energy efficiency. One of the other things that came out of the survey was pests and vermin were one of the highest ones. Can you explain that a little bit, if anybody does that?
I'm not sure if we can explain too much more. That would require quite a bit more exploration about what that is, because that can range everything from bedbugs to, to rats.
Rats.
Yeah.
Raccoons.
So there's...
What's in our neighbors? Was that unsolicited, or was that a selection?
I think that was a heading that was put there, and, and so more exploration of that would be necessary, that, giving some cues to follow up on.
I kind of like the sunset vision as well, although, because it makes us come and look at it. Although we could accomplish the same thing by saying we have a mandatory review of a program without having the sunset, so we can make it permanent and then, and then have a mandatory review of it. Do we do that with any other programs?
No.
Do we have mandatory reviews that come back to council for review?
I'm not aware.
We don't have any programs like this, so I've got many examples. That would be something I'd like to explore, is make it a permanent thing and then have it, have a mandatory review, so you come back and look at it, so we do our work. And then, so I, too, am a little puzzled by why, I understand the rebate to build trust, but if you, the other way is to say, "We won't raise the rates for an extra two years if we kept the surplus and just kept this in." I'm a little worried about yo-yo rates. You keep, you know, one year we lower it, the next year we're raising it, that doesn't, and if, you know, if we bring it down to eight and then bring it to 11, you know, a hard time explaining that. And if 2013 is the breakpoint where we have more costs, that's, I don't know that we want to go there. And then, so I'm, how, what's the best way for us to move forward incorporating some of the changes that we've discussed at the table here? A motion, or, because the motion is to move this forward to a public hearing. I suspect, based on the staff recommendation, and there's some things that I would like to add to the staff recommendation if that's the case.
So what we were anticipating or recommending was that you would, we would move the ordinance as it stands with one modification to the allowance of multi-year billing. We wouldn't be adding other things in right now, but we would continue to work on this through the summer with the committee and give you some assurance in the fall of, here's where we're at with the billing and these other items. If what you want is for us to work on changing the ordinance to add these things in, you can either go ahead and lift the sunset and leave it as it is, and we'll come back and you can do it again, or you can say, "No, we want to add these things in and have us come back sometime before September." Right now, it's set to sunset in September.
My personal preference, I'm running out of time here, is that we get it all done by, in one chunk, by September 30th, and not have this carried forward. So if we could incorporate a look at those changes in the, in the public hearing so that we come back and make all, everything at one time before the sunset occurs, would be my preference.
Okay, would you like another round, Helen?
If I need one.
Okay. Betty, you're next.
Can we do that? Can we add things that have been suggested to the public hearing?
I assume so, yeah.
Yeah.
Like bedbugs and refrigerators?
As options for...
Well, you can do it.
My suggestion for you is you put the main motion on the table, and then you move to amend, to add, and then the specific things that you want to add. As the one who may have to draft this proposed ordinance, your discussion so far hasn't been clear enough for me to know where there's a majority of you that would like to add something, and so being specific in the motion would help me know how to draft that ordinance.
Oh, would there have to be a majority, since we're going to have a public hearing? Could it be just some people?
A majority, a majority of you would, if you want to give direction to bring back an ordinance that has certain things in it, a majority of you are going to have to vote to give that direction. As you have often done, it doesn't mean that you necessarily are going to vote for it after the public hearing. I mean, you have initiated things before where we told you, we're just asking you to initiate, to get it to a public hearing. It doesn't mean that you're going to vote for it once you have the public hearing. So if you think something may be a good idea, if, or if you just want to hear from the public as to whether the public thinks something's a good idea, then I would say, put it into the motion, we'll add it to the ordinance, it will be flagged in legislative format, and then the public can say, "I like this one, I don't like this one."
But it would have to be four of us, you say?
It would have to, yes, four of you would have to vote to have it go into the ordinance today.
Presumably, we can change things after a public hearing.
Absolutely.
That's supposed to be what they're for, to hear what people think.
Right. That's the expectation, yeah.
Too often, that is not the way it goes, but, and I wanted to say that there was, I don't know how long before Pat's exempt, Pat's date, but there was a rental housing ordinance in existence in 1980, I know, because I used it, I was renting at the time, and it was stronger than the one we have now. One provision I, was that, at least this is what I was told, that if anyone had a legitimate complaint, then the landlord, the owner could not raise rent on any of the units under that landlord for a year, which made it a very effective ordinance. And I don't know what else was, I think it was really an ordinance that really worked, but it was allowed to sunset for some reason, long ago. That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I put myself in the queue. I've just got one more question and then some comments and suggestions. My last question is, you know, the other jurisdictions, we've seen the list, are charging quite a bit higher fees per unit. Beaverton's 50 bucks, Bedford's 40, Gresham 35 to 50, depending on certain factors. So my, my question is, and then, maybe they didn't really have time to really go and drill down on each of these, but what are they using this money for? Do they have, I'm wondering if they have other, if they use, do they have, have they built up big reserves? Do they, do they have other programs that kind of are attached to this program that the fees go to?
Yeah, we've not done an in-depth analysis of this state.
Well, yeah, maybe I'll try to pursue that. I'm interested in that. Yeah, I think that the, well, I would just as soon see the sunset provision taken out and just have this be a, personally, I can live with a four-year, you know, addition, but I'd rather just see it become permanent, because I don't know any place in the United States where they've had things like this, where they just got rid of them. There may be someplace. Seems like there's always going to be tensions between landlords and tenants. So I, I would just like to see it continue, but I, I can live with the four years. I think that the Corvallis-like additions regarding, you know, appliances and air infiltration and drywall should be added before we vote on it. I think that the time for the remediation of complaints should be shortened, like Corvallis, down to eight days, especially in the wintertime when it's freezing. If your heater goes out, your stove doesn't work, you know, that's, that's really a big deal, when it's below freezing. And sometimes it can be below freezing for two weeks at a time here. I think that a brochure detailing the program and tenants' rights should be presented to the tenant at lease signing. That's a very simple thing. Because we've, we've seen from the comments, a lot of them aren't aware of the program, they're not aware of their rights, they're not, I mean, it's detailed sometimes in the lease, but a lot of people don't read legalese so well, especially if they're immigrants and don't have access to a lawyer. So I think that would be a very simple thing to add. I think long-term, and I don't mean to muddy the conversation now, but long-term, maybe raise the rates and look at increasing the fee and dedicating the surplus to two funds. One for homeless shelters, either the existing services, or to a new fund if we ever decide to do a homeless encampment. And then another fund that would be dedicated and build up through the years for affordable housing, below-market housing, affordable housing, and build up a fund there, because it's hard to gather funds for those things. And I'm done, I might need one more round. And Pat, you're next.
Thank you, Councilman. You know, regarding surpluses built up by other jurisdictions, I wonder if they just snitch it for other general, general fund purposes, if, you know, if they have extra money left over. It'd be interesting to find that out. You know, I wanted to point out that landlords aren't inherently bad. And sometimes around this table, we hear this kind of us versus them, the landlords, we've got to fight landlords because they're bad. And, you know, we have landlords on the, on the committee. I see Dennis Cassidy sitting back there, Eric calls on the committee. And Counselor Taylor brings up a good point, that renters need to be represented in a certain, in a certain way. I also see John Van Lanningham sitting here, and I see Norton sitting in the back, who, when I was first on the Housing Policy Board 17 years ago, these guys had already been on it a long time, representing landlords, representing tenants. And they've done it very effectively. I guess they're 17 years better now than they were then, I guess. Now, as far as the, it's interesting that we're looking at the code and increasing some, it's recommended that, by some that we increase the cost of the code. Needless to say, any increase in cost or in the, in the fee is going to be passed along to the, to the renters. And sometimes we talk about how a 50-cent utility fee is going to potentially put people out of a home, and we're adding rental fees which would certainly exceed 50 cents. And I wonder how that weighs in people's minds about how that might put people out of a home. I wonder how that weighs in people's minds, about how that might put people out of a home. And also significantly, we're looking at heating and hot water. Just last week, we were talking about adding, the possibility of adding units for, that have basically no heat, no hot water, you know, looking at temporary and semi-permanent camps that don't have any rental codes. And I had just, you know, this council and future councils need to kind of weigh those issues. When we add to the cost of rental by adding to the fees, how, how does that reduce the possibility of people being able to live in, in a rental unit, because they have to pay more? And how does this affect the decisions that we or other councils will have to make regarding what sort of housing can we temporarily erect for people to keep them out of the elements at night, on a, either a temporary basis or on a semi-permanent basis? Questions that we have to throw in there, when we're talking about increasing the cost of rental housing.
So, can I jump in here?
Yes.
One of the things that we were trying to do is not push you up against the sunset date of September, and you had asked us to come back in September, it sunsets in September. It's a little bit challenging for staff to engage, to get people involved for something that may end in September, and we don't want to end up at that last date. So one potential opportunity is, we could have a public hearing on the ordinance as it is, and just extend the sunset date out four years, with a commitment that we'll be back in September, and we can look at with the group. We have a good committee working right now, we're talking about a shift in our department of where this program houses, and that we could incrementally go through this list and come back with a different recommendation on the ordinance in the fall, but knowing that the sunset is lifted. I feel, I would feel, I just have to say, I'm uncomfortable taking a whole lot of things to the public hearing, that we haven't had a chance at all to discuss with the committee members that are sitting behind me, and it's been a pretty good process, so I would just recommend we have a little bit of time to work with them.
Okay, I put myself back in the queue for, I think, maybe my final comments. So I think what you're saying, yeah, I think what you're saying makes sense, is, in other words, maybe vote to approve the sunset extension, I mean, well, I mean, have the public hearing, and then the council would vote on that, up or down, and, but without any changes, without reducing the fee, or any of these other suggestions, and then let that time expire through the rest of spring and summer and into the fall, to incorporate, or not incorporate, the things that we've been talking about today, for a final decision in the fall. Is that kind of what you're suggesting?
I, I'm suggesting, and Glenn, you can weigh in on this if you want, I'm suggesting two different ordinance actions. The first one being, we have a public hearing, and we amend the ordinance just to change the sunset date to four years out.
Okay.
And that we come back in the fall, that we explore the ideas that I've, that I think we've heard and we've documented, we can check back with you after the public hearing, and that we could come back with a, a set of recommendations for how you might revise the actual code language. The billing amount is not in the code, the billing is an administrative, and we'll be working on that anyway.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
So they'd be two different, so you would end up having two different public hearings and two different actions, potentially, if you agree to do that.
Well, yes, thank you. I, I think a little more time to work on this would be okay, but I mean, with, not too much time, I think it should be fair, you know, not too hard to move it forward. And I just had a comment, though, about, you know, reducing the rate and the cost, and then rebating, that's a lot of staff time, that's a lot of mailing time, it's just, it's a pretty, I think the cost of the rebate would really exceed the benefit, because we're going to have to come right back around and go, "Well, hey, guess what, revenues are, and, and expenses are meeting now, and they're going to increase next year, so now we have to go through the whole thing again, mail-out notices, raise the rate." I would, I guess that's for later discussion, but I, I would, people were discussing it, and I, I think it'd be silly to do that, and it's silly to, like, reduce the cheapest fee that we know of in this state. So, um, let's see, Chris?
Oh, I was just gonna, um, we're up against a time, and I'm very cognizant of that. So, would you want a motion today to extend this, knowing, like, an affirmative that we are going to extend the sunset, do you, do we need to?
I have a motion.
Do we need, I know, but I'm in the queue. Or do we need to wait until the public hearing to put the motion on the, on the table, to extend it? Because I, I agree, I, I hear your concern about, about having staff do, do work, not knowing or not whether it's going to be extended, and so I don't like to put motions on the table on the fly, I really don't, but I'm, I hear.
You can, what you're being asked to do today is to direct, in essence, the scheduling of a public hearing on an ordinance that would extend the sunset by four years and provide the flexibility on the bill, the annual billing. If you do that, then there will be a public hearing, and then you can vote to extend, to extend the sunset. The other thing you can do, as Sarah was saying, is to add a second part to the motion, if you want to do that, that in essence would say, direct the city manager to discuss with this committee the ideas that you have talked about today, and then to bring back to the council for a work session in the fall, proposed changes to the ordinance based on that conversation. So, there would be a public hearing whenever it's scheduled in the next month, on the sunset, and you would have another work session in the fall on some of the ideas that you were talking about today.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I'm done.
Okay, and next is, sorry, Chris, I think Alan was next.
No, in fact, actually, I was going to suggest what, what Glenn did. I, I don't like doing things on the fly, so I think where we are now is probably, works.
Yeah.
My question was about, most of these are administrative, except for item G, which is the multi-year billing option, which would require an ordinance change, and the sunset change. So, the way this is put forward is, explore, develop, work on, so what does that, what does that mean to staff? How are you going to move these things forward, especially, like, hey, to reduce the annual fee, and we've had a conversation on that?
I think it, well, what we had indicated earlier is that we're going to continue working on those, and that we would report back in September to you on the progress we'd made on all of those items, but they weren't code-related, but I felt like you would at least need to know, we have a group we've been working with, we may want to expand that group, do it a little different, but that we continue, that we commit to continue working on these and addressing these issues, so that you would feel comfortable with the sunset being extended.
So, I guess I had caution, staff, that some of these, while maybe able to be done administratively, I would think the council would want to weigh on them, whether or not they occur.
Right.
So, you're not intending to do them administratively.
No.
Or come to conclusions on councils. Okay.
And then, I guess, I'm okay with doing the two, two bites at the apple thing. I guess the, the second part to me would be to change the health and safety, minimum habitability standards, to the same as Corvallis, to add appliances, air filtration, drywall conditions, and to change the notice and action provisions to be the same as Corvallis. That's the way I would like to see, those are the two things that I would like to see us move on.
Thank you. I have a motion, as suggested, regarding the rebates, you could send back out a card just saying, "If you want the rebate, send back the card, and we'll send you the rebate. If you don't send back the card, we'll assume you don't want the rebate, and we'll apply it to low-income housing." So, that's a suggestion.
It would just be incorporated in their bill that they get every year, anyway.
Okay. All right. So I have a motion, then, as suggested by the, the work session piece. I move to approve the city manager's recommendation to develop an ordinance that extends the sunset provision to fall 2016, and to schedule a public hearing and council action on the proposed ordinance, and to direct the city manager to discuss with a committee, the previously formed committee, ideas for the proposed changes to the ordinance, and bring back recommendations for the council in the fall. Cover it, Glenn?
Second, and then I want to speak.
Does that cover it for everybody?
Yeah, just for me.
Okay.
I move to substitute, drop the sun, eliminate the sunset.
Is there a second? I'll second that.
So, to clarify, you don't need to let it sunset?
I said to eliminate the sunset.
Eliminate the sunset, and they could go forward.
Yes, everything else is okay. No sunset.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So, I'd be in favor of that, if it had a mandatory comp, uh, report back or mechanism to come back every three, four years to relook at the.
Okay, I'll change it to eliminate the sunset and have a mandatory discussion after four years.
Every four.
Every four years.
Second. Um, no further discussion? All in favor?
Of the amendment, right?
Well, of the, of the, the motion as amended?
Right.
Oh, amendment, all right, the amendment. I see, okay. All in favor of the amendment? All opposed? It's four to three, the amendment passes. The main motion, all in favor? Four. Opposed? Three.
That is our lead.
All right. I guess we're done with this, and the second item is an update on the transportation system plan.
[inaudible]
It's kind of hard to disappoint a government when you're, after a public hearing.
Oh, I see. I guess I'm not thinking that very hard.
Sorry?
I'm not thinking that.
Yeah. I was going to have this motion, just to remind you of the sunset. No, no.
Thank you very much, given the time. Kurt, I'll just send it over to you.
Thank you. I have the pleasure of updating the last seven, or, excuse me, about nine months' worth of work on the transportation system plan. I had a 15-minute PowerPoint, and we'll see if we can do it in five, so.
Speak leaders.
Feel free to stop me if I'm skipping your favorite part, and, or we can backtrack. But, it works from here. Uh, no, I've got it, but if you can dim the lights. A copy of the PowerPoints being given, but generally, I'll actually skip the agenda, we'll just do it. The transportation system plan, or we call it the TSP, it's a 20-year master plan. Transplan is currently our TSP. It's a regional plan that was last updated in 2002, but this update, because of the separation of the urban growth boundaries between Eugene and Springfield, this is our first transportation plan that is focused on Eugene, and we're coordinating with Springfield and Lane County, and the Sea of Coburg, but this will be unique. We're very much coordinating with Envision Eugene, and with our partners in the, in the region. I'll skip this, but it was triggered when a regional plan was updated, and we have a deadline imposed by the Lane, or the Land Conservation Development Commission. We're aiming to finish in the year 2013. They gave us that long, so that we could do local plans that would feed into the regional From my perspective, the planets have aligned, it makes managing the project a little more challenging, but we are updating our land use plan, we have a new pedestrian bicycle master plan, lane transit districts updating plans, there's a new airport, there's a lot of planning going on right now, and we have that opportunity to coordinate all these things and have them marching in the same parade. We've had the blessing of a large group of very energetic and informed and generous with their time, members of the public advising us with this. Our Transportation Community Resource Group, or the TCRG, the meetings are open to the public, people can come and go. We started with the Envision Eugene CRG, we added our standing bicycle pedestrian advisory committee, the advisory committee to the bicycle pedestrian master plan, and others. So when we send out a notice of a meeting, there's over 100 people are invited to. They've been meeting for more than a year, and they're charged as to provide advice to staff and the consulting team. Part of the reason we're here today is that the, the nature of the discussions are transitioning from background and educational, and sort of talking through different topics, to drafting policies and objectives, and coming up with projects to be studied. We've been using the webpage, that I think was just a twinkle in our eye when we, we were here last. It's integrated with all the other transportation planning going on in, in this region, and we're currently using the site with surveys and interactive maps that the public can use to weigh in on our draft goals, objectives, and project lists. So during the course of this study, we studied Envision Eugene, the Climate and Energy Action Plan, the head bike master plan, the state's greenhouse gas reduction goals, we studied transit planning, street design, and sustainable transportation principles. So a few of the things we've learned, these are the consistency with Envision Eugene, our plan is shaping up to support the growth patterns, the 20-minute neighborhoods, the key transit corridors. One thing we're finding, though, in the transportation end, the metro plan and transplan really laid a good foundation for our work, many forward, progressive things heading us in the right direction. Transplan does not mention greenhouse gas or climate change, it does not bring up energy uncertainty, or some of the principles from our Climate and Energy Action Plan, and it does not mention sustainability, so those are new themes that we will do. A key lesson, coming from ODOT, and parallel to federal government, is we will, we should not expect to have near as much money in the future for transportation construction projects. And in fact, this is off the ODOT website, by the year 2015, they expect their program will have half the current funding levels, and they will be focusing on maintaining the highway system. We're hearing from the state, they're treating climate change as a very real phenomenon, but they see it as an economic situation, and that addressing climate change actually bolsters the economy of the state. If we can spend less money, individual and household funds on transportation, predominantly on automobiles, that's money that would be available to be spent in other ways, locally. Although true sustainability, or especially in transportation, a sustainable transportation system would be very difficult to achieve, there are many steps that we should be taking soon, and the theme of resilience that came from the Climate and Energy Action Plan is carrying forward into the transportation plan. We're learning that we've been accustomed to less congestion than many other cities that have what we see as the vibrant key transit corridors. ODOT is developing a higher tolerance for congestion, so the old rule of thumb that ODOT won't let us develop intently along their highways may be changing in the future, and our assumptions for the future are going to be real hard to pin down, because technology and trends are changing very, very much. I'll get into examples later, if you want. And part of our coordination now with Envision Eugene is the recognition that our busiest corridors, where the commercial activity is, where people should most want to live in the future, our key transit corridors, as the Envision Eugene pillars call them, are also becoming our most congested streets, and so there's that tension that we will have to deal with. Go through. The direction we're hearing from the Community Resource Group, and I say in the staff report, I don't pretend that everybody agrees on all these, but we should be improving the alternatives to driving alone, so transit, bike, pedestrian, carpooling, and many other technologies, to reduce congestion on the street. We should be trying to meet our climate change goals, and those from the state, even if they're not yet mandates. Freight is an important mode that needs to be addressed in our plan. Most of our streets are just not big enough, nor should they be, to accommodate everything we would want to see in all the streets, so finding the right balance of how to use the existing right-of-ways, or slight adjustments to the right-of-ways, say, between freight, transit, automobiles, bikes, pedestrians, landscaping, other amenities, we need to find the right balance for the different types of corridors, and that would be our challenge, and we're working with the Envision Eugene team on that. Equity and access matter a lot to the Community Resource Group. We've been refining the triple bottom line for transportation. Equity and access matter a lot to the Community Resource Group. We've been refining the triple bottom line for transportation, we've broken into eight categories. Where we are now, the regional traffic model has been updated to include all the land use assumptions, the, the thousands of hours of working that the Envision Eugene Technical Resource Group had worked on. So what lands are vacant, how, what's buildable, what, where the growth might be occurring throughout the community has been integrated into the traffic model. We've been building all the, we call it the universe of potential projects, all the types of projects that should be studied, and then deciding what carries forward into the new plan. The public outreach and just kind of the thought process and the data between the transportation plan and Envision Eugene are merging quite well, and so the transportation plan was a feature at all the six community forums, as an example, that we just completed last night. And again, we're all sort of asking for public feedback at this time, particularly the transportation plan. I'll highlight very briefly, and actually I'll skip most of it, given the time. For the goals and objectives that have been drafted, the goals and objectives play an important part because that's what we will use to create some of the, the culling out of the transportation projects, like which construction projects, for instance, or, and programs should go forward. So it's important that the goals and objectives reflect the right balance that we think we need for this community. We'll have a chance to revisit those later, but we'll be using them. So the goals still reflect those that are in Transplan, Integrated Multimodal Safe-Efficient Transportation System. But we're adding sustainability, community resilience to change, and an equity component. So those will be new. The objectives, one of the key things, we're integrating the goal that was in the pedestrian bicycle master plan of doubling the percentage or the share of trips made of foot, bicycle, and transit. We'll see health, air pollution, zero fatalities, so safety component will be introduced in these. And a more specificity around equity and sharing the joys and, and the downsides to the transportation system, neighborhood by neighborhood. The access and mobility really reflect the Envision Eugene, the twenty-minute neighborhoods. Flushing out what it means for the economic benefits of the transit system. For those watching via video, well, if you found the video, you can find the goals and objectives onsite also. We will see water quality and other kind of ecological attributes integrated into this transportation plan as proposed. So, given with the draft goals and objectives, we're out looking for public input. The surveys and the interactive maps that are available on the Eugene TSP website will be open for a month more than what I said in your staff reports, we're keeping those open through May. We will analyze those, refine the list of projects, perhaps be adjusting some of the goals and objectives, and then starting to refine that list of projects about what should be studied. ODOT, which has been the primary funding source for this process so far, funded for Phase One, and so we will be developing the plan for Phase Two, which will be the next year's worth of work. They'll be refining the project descriptions, the costs, testing those projects against the goals and objectives, refining, saying, here's what we think we should be pursuing in the next twenty years. More public process, and packaging that into a plan that can be adopted. When we'll get there, we hope the local transportation plan will be done in early to mid 2013, so during this next year. That will inform and allow the regional transportation plan to be adopted in 2013. See, John Van Landingham, who was chair of LCDC, still here, we're still intending to meet the deadline. And then the federally required regional transportation plan, really dictates the federal funding, will be updated to reflect ours and Springfield and Lane County's transportation system plans. So, around 2013, slightly thereafter, everything's gonna line up beautifully, all the funding, all the priorities, everything will make perfect sense and be aligned. So, any questions? Sorry, I took more than five.
Just actually, a question regarding the statement, and a comment on it. Regarding our most congested streets, our most congested streets are where there is the most commercial activity. And I'm, I'm thinking of the commercial, the congested streets that I drive on, I drive on Course West 11.
Sure.
Many days, and it is very congested, and there's a lot of commercial activity. I, I guess, the, just the point I wanted to make is when our congested streets have the most commercial activity, and also are a state highway, then we have double, triple the impact. Because we have through traffic that's trying to go down West 11th, that is affecting the commercial district, which is a growing residential district, and we're wanting to put a bus rapid transit line on there, and it's the most, already the most congested street, because it is a state highway, I guess. Then the other congested street that we have is the sixth and seventh corridor, which actually is two state highways wrapped into one, along with the congested commercial activity and lots and lots of streets, and bus traffic transit. So just, it's a true statement, our most congested streets are where we have the most commercial activity, and we exacerbate that congestion by making certain that state highways remain on our most congested streets.
Think it's rhetorical, it, it is a...
It's okay not to answer.
We are aware and are working, trying to find that right balance.
Okay, Andrea?
Thank you, so, hi Kurt, nice to see you. So, we, we're working on a project with ODOT a while back, it's probably, we haven't met in at least a year, and it's the Beltline Interchange Facility, right there on River Road, going east to Delta. And last time I talked to Sarah, is it Kavanaugh, better name? Savannah Crawford, thank you.
Thank you.
You understand my language. Not really. I was just kind of wondering if, if there was any report on, on any, any movement around that, or we just, alright, so with this report, you were, you made the comment about our streets are gonna be more crowded, so is that kind of the mentality that ODOT has around Beltline? Because, you know, that's still considerably an issue.
Rob might have more information precisely where it is. ODOT is still proceeding, they haven't dropped the Beltline study. And I think they're gearing up to redefine and get the money to continue with that, that study. And even with all their forecasts of the shortage or much less funding available in the future than, they are still, they see Beltline as a, one of the important projects to keep studying, at least, to see. I think one of the, the concerns for them, there's congestion, there's the concern that, at times, traffic just stops, which is kind of the worst. But they also see it as a safety problem. So the road's carrying a lot of kind of local traffic, because it's one of the few crossings of the river. And it was built for much less traffic in a highway, so the, the ramps and the merging lanes and, and things don't meet current standards, and so there's many factors that they think they can improve there. But I think they still expect that there, it will remain congested, no matter what. But it, there are some, it's, it may be one of the, the exceptions to where there may be some construction, either widening Beltline, or, as I've been in the Envision Eugene TSP forums lately, there's, I'm hearing a lot of support for the building a parallel bridge that connects Green Acres Road to Division or Beaver, to carry some of the local traffic off. That still seems to be on the table, and some improvements to Delta Highway also, that there are still some construction type things that improve congestion and safety.
So do we know, God forbid, is there like a timeframe that we're gonna be discussing this? Is there any money?
Construction will be...
You know, like, is this one of those five to ten to twenty-year answers?
Rob deals more with that.
Yes, I mean, ODOT has programmed two and a half million dollars in the STIP for the NEPA phase of the project. There's still, what Savannah's gonna be starting up soon is Phase Two of the facility planning, but they're, they're still holding at two and a half million dollars out there. From what Savannah's said in the past, though, that's not enough to do all the NEPA work that they envision. And that, so we've tried through like the United Front to get additional funding for that, without success yet. So I think part of the Phase Two, I think, will probably entail also looking at, how do we, how do we roll out the NEPA work, is there a way we can do it that we phase it with the money that's at hand? Or do we need to really look at some other approaches? And I think at the regional level, through the NPO, there's recognition that that's the next sort of big highway project for our region, once, once I-5 Beltline is completed.
But it's a ways away, it sounds like...
Yeah, I think, in terms of any construction. Now, just to make sure people understand, there's, there's been a little confusion, because there's also gonna be a separate, what's called ITS, or Intelligent Transportation System Project, in that vicinity, where, where ODOT is gonna add, add ramp meters...
Right.
To a couple of the on-ramps.
Are you talking about I-5?
On Beltline.
Okay.
A Beltline between River Road and Delta Highway, they're gonna add ramp meters to some of the on-ramps. That's gonna happen probably in the next few years.
Okay.
They're working on that project right now.
It's just a temporary.
Okay, 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 got it. So that has a...
And that was actually part of, when House Bill 2001 passed, that was part of, actually, one of the small infrastructure projects that was included in that.
Okay, so, it's a ways down the road.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, Alan?
I was just gonna say that the Beltline and Delta Highway is the number-one Eugene priority that we keep pushing at MPC, but it also, I believe, at MPC level and at the state level, it's perceived as the regional number-one project as well, for a lot of safety concerns, but also congestion. So, but, just for people watching at home, NEPA's the National Environmental Protection Act, which requires the environmental work to be done around any federally-funded project, so, which takes quite a bit of doing, and it also takes quite a bit of money and quite a bit of time to do, and probably take three years just to do that part. And then you'd start to get into the design and funding, and so you're not gonna see anything happen at that intersection for, I'd say, ten years.
Transportation is always long-term.
Any other comments or questions?
Oh, Kurt, yeah, I had one more, which was, kept talking about resiliency. Can you define that a little better?
Try to use a purposely vague term. I can use some examples. The idea is that some projects, actually, I will quote Counselor Pryor. I've heard with some of the Envision Eugene are talk about scenario planning, or LTD scenario planning, when you've discussed these topics earlier. But there's some actions, if you say, well, if this happens in the future, we should react in a certain way, but if something else happens, if funding goes up, or funding goes down, different ways, and can we plan? Are there certain actions that are good things in different scenarios? That, kind of hedging our bets to move forward. And that's part of what we mean by resiliency, is are there things we can do that no matter what surprises the future throws at us, we are more comfortable, better prepared, less hurt, for instance? So some of the examples that come up in our, our discussions are the price of gas, or peak oil shortage of gasoline, fuel for automobiles. If gasoline prices shoot up very rapidly, and many more people cannot afford to commute to work or how to get around, have, what have we done to prepare other options? Are there other ways of, for people to get around town? That's an example. What if, and, and some of the, conversely, then if there are that many fewer cars on the street, do we have plans, should we be planning for street widening and things? Climate change is another, coming out of the Climate and Energy Action Plan. If we see many more people coming suddenly, because we have water and Arizona doesn't, are we prepared? Can we improve our transportation systems to accommodate fluctuations in, in that funding, technology changes, there's any number of things that are happening, and, and there are trends that are happening now that we don't know how they will play out. There's new technologies, some are older that we can use, like the ramp metering that Rob just mentioned. Others are computer programs, so the traffic signals along a corridor can talk to each other better and, and keep traffic moving a little bit, and they're very expensive now, but, you know, that may be a possibility, instead of widening a street, that's technologies. We are seeing new studies that the, I call them the younger generation, but the eighteen's to thirty-somethings are, more of them are driving less, and getting their driver's license later. Is that a trend that, you know, so how that will affect us in the future, we're, and we don't know yet. Will that trend continue when that generation has more children? Are they gonna join my generation driving more? We don't know, but how do we situate ourselves so that people can still get access to their services, they can get to work, they can meet their daily needs, and, without bankrupting, without losing their homes or something? So it's, but, it's been a very ripe discussion with the TCRG, and kind of discussing some of these.
Good answer, that fills it in a little bit more. One more comment, I like the direction that you've got in the presentation, it's on the mark for me, especially the draft TSP goals and objectives, I think those are the right ones for me, and if we proceed, these things will get flushed out more, and how they, the new things get integrated into the, into the transportation plan will be interesting and informative for the council and the community.
Thank you. And Counselor Pryor?
You know, we have three children, two, one lives in Tucson, one lives in San Francisco, and one lives in Rio de Janeiro right now. And two of our three children don't have driver's licenses, period. If that's, it's maybe a part of the trend that we're talking about. Just a quick question, Kurt, you mentioned a continued discussion of a parallel bridge to take congestion off Beltline. Now, a number of years ago, we were talking about a bridge that would have taken congestion off of Beltline. The bridge that's being discussed currently, how does, how is it similar or dissimilar to the bridge that we took off the table a number of years ago?
The bridge that's still being considered by ODOT as part of the Beltline study would be immediately parallel, and very proximate to the existing bridge, the crossing over the river. And the designs I've seen, it's on to the north or downstream. So in some ways, if one were driving, it would almost appear to be a widened bridge, but it would connect to, off the highway, and so people could cross the river without having to get on Beltline. The bridge that was removed during the Transplan update, back in late nineties, 2001, was much further south, somewhere in the, is slightly before my time, in the vicinity of Valley River Center, a little bit downstream. Somewhere around there. It has been mentioned in some of our forums, people saying, you know, maybe it's time to reconsider that. I, in some of the Beltline meetings that I attended, they were doing surveys on where the people are coming and going, and trying to get a sense of how, what alternatives need to be discussed for Beltline. And the sense was, what I picked up from the meeting, was that a bridge much further south would not take enough off Beltline, that it wasn't a significant enough factor for Beltline, and they dropped it from the study.
But still then, as now, people were trying to get from Delta Highway to, to River Road without crossing on the Beltline, and that's, you know, a large part of the funneling and congestion that we have today, is because we don't have that other bridge. Thank you.
If I can, one of the, the factors that'll be coming up, as the Envision Eugene land use proposal, the vision, gets closer to being moved forward towards adoption, we'll be able to take that land use data and, like, where the future populations will be, and along which corridors... along which corridors, and if the urban growth boundary expands, and get that into the traffic model. We'll have a much clearer indication of where the congestion will be and how bad in the future from that, and that will inform our discussions, what options to pursue.
Thank you, Kurt. Thanks.
Okay, we're about time now. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much, Kurt.
Thank you.
You demonstrated admirable resiliency in your shortened time period, and you did a very good job.
Good example.
Thank you. I'll now close the work session.